Hello, hi, Assalamualaikum. Welcome back to First Step from Table to Reality. Okay, today, now, we are airing from Studio TV Faculty Communication and Media, UITM Shah Alam. With here now at studio, we have our guest from Sekolah Menengah Kepangsaan Section 9. And we also have our international student from Japan. Yes, okay, we have our guest here, from Japan. May I know your name? Please introduce yourself.
My name is Yuna.
Yuna?
Yes.
Wow, what's a nice name. Here we have an actor and singer named Yuna, international singer. You know Yuna? You know?
Oh, I don't know.
Oh, it's okay, it's okay. Later you can hear her song. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, and you, from SMK Session 9. Okay, introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Zoar.
Zoar?
Yes.
Zoar?
Yes.
Okay, you, how old are you?
14.
14, wow, okay. Good, good, okay, so, you guys come here in the morning earlier. Where you guys from? In the morning, where you guys go? Yuna?
One second please, sorry. One second please, sorry.
Before we came to this studio, where have you been? Where did you go with your friends?
Oh, I didn't go anywhere.
Oh, you just come straight?
From hotel to here.
Oh, to here, oh, okay, okay. And...
Before we got here, we were at school.
At school?
Yeah.
You guys from school?
Yes.
Oh, you have PDNP in the morning, no? You just...
No, we just come from school.
Oh, and then terus come here?
Yes.
Ah, tak pergi pusing-pusing dulu lah, fakultinya belum lagi, terus datang sini. Dah... Dah pusing tadi?
Dah, 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 dah.
Pusing ke mana tadi?
Oh, we just went around from apa? I forgot the name of that place, but we were there. And then apa kita night bus, and then we went around till we got here.
Ah, okay, 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 okay. Okay, so, Yuna, from the hotel, what did you have for your breakfast in the morning?
Oh, I have bread.
Bread and?
And omelette.
Omelette, oh, is it good?
Yes.
Where hotel did you check in?
Oh, sorry, one second please.
Is it near the hotel name? You don't know?
It's around this university.
Oh. Yes. Is it far from here?
It's not so far, maybe.
Not so far, not so close. Just nice, okay. Okay, so, for you, what did you have in the morning?
My brothers gave me a piece of bread.
A piece of bread?
No, it wasn't a piece of bread, it was a bun.
Okay, a bun, aha. And water?
No. They just baggy bun and get there.
Okay. Okay, so, Yuna, you came here under what? I mean like, your purpose to come here, under some scholarship or under some school, your university? You from university, right?
Oh, no, I'm high school student.
You're high school student also? What's your high school name?
I'm sorry, one second.
Your, your high school?
My high school is Roka High School in Japan.
Roka?
Loka.
Loka High School, from?
I'm from Loka.
Loka, okay. So, is it for, of course, for the local, right? Okay. Okay, so, you, you know here, we, in the studio, are very, very excited to greet you guys, to show you guys more about what we are doing here. So, after this, we will come back with a lot of more questions. So, see you after break.
I do have any...
We need to switch another talent. So, maybe you guys can give to your friends.
Okay.
Anybody, anybody.
Alright. You! Nah, 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 go. Take it, take it, take it, take it. It's your turn, it's your turn. Ambil je lah.
Siapa nak jadi talent? Siapa nak jadi talent? Dua depan. Siapa nak jadi? Jom. Masuk TV, masuk TV. Masuk TV, masuk TV. Jom. Bad letak kat tepi low.
If I show this one, this signs for 30 more seconds. 30 more seconds, it's either before we go live or before we go to commercial break. For this one, 15 seconds, 15 seconds more. Okay, if I show this line, yeah, it's a sign for host to wrap up the program.
I see.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Ah, sayin' about the story. Ah, tak, ada campur ada 4, 12, 15, 16. What is your name?
My name is Ako.
Ako?
Ako, so.
What's your name? My name is Darwisha.
Darwisha, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. How old are you?
I'm 15 years old.
Oh, 15, which is the same.
15 seconds before live. 10, 9, 8, 7, 6...
Hello, welcome back to First Step from Table to Reality. Okay, we have a new guest here. So, can you introduce yourself? What's your name?
Okay, my name is Ako. I'm from Shinjuku High School. Nice to meet you.
Shinjuku High School, okay. Nice to meet you, and you?
My name is Darwisha Nahwa. I'm from SMK Session 9. I'm also 15 years old.
Darwisha, okay. Nice to meet you too, okay. So, Ako, is it?
Yes.
Okay, can, let's, we chat a bit lah. So, Ako, how long have you been in Malaysia?
I will stay in Malaysia 5 nights and 7 days.
7 days, since when? Like, you've been there, been here since?
The day before yesterday.
The first day?
So, today is the 3rd day.
Oh, okay, so, yesterday, where did you go?
I went to Boy High School.
Oh, so, there's a lot of people there lah. What did you learn there?
We did conversation about Malaysia.
Malaysia, ah, you learn about Malaysia?
Yeah, yeah.
Ah, so, many, many things you learn, you think? What thing did you learn?
I learned how to communicate with people who has different religions.
Yeah, oh, okay, so you know Malaysian a bit?
Yes.
So, siapa nama awak? Can you answer that now?
I know.
Follow me. Nama saya?
Nama saya?
Ako.
Ako.
So, that's mean, my name is Ako.
Oh, I see.
Okay, so, nama saya?
Nama saya Ako.
Okay, good, good, okay. Darwisha, so you...
Yes.
Kau orang pagi tadi pergi sekolah dulu kan, neper sekolah?
Oh, yes, we're from school, yeah.
So, dekat sekolah, kau orang sekarang ni form berapa?
Form 3.
Form 3?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so you guys study PT3 ke? Tak ada ya?
Um, no, we don't have PT3 anymore.
You guys have final exam still?
Yes, we do.
So, how's your study for now? Good? You're doing good so far?
Yes.
Good. It's okay, you have to keep going, okay? Okay, so, for Ako, what in Malaysia so far, what food do you like the most?
In Malaysia?
Yes.
I want to eat durian.
You, you have eaten?
Ah, no, I want to eat.
You want to?
I want to try it.
Oh, okay, maybe you can, you can ask your teacher to bring you to some stall near the street and buy some durian to taste it.
Okay.
Please don't, don't regret when you eat durian, it's delicious actually.
Okay, okay.
Darwisha, do you like durian too?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes. So, basically Malaysian, we all like durian actually, but some of durian are not so liking. So, it's depend. Hopefully you got the best one. So, I don't think you have eaten in these past 2 days? Nasi lemak, you have tried nasi lemak?
Not yet, but yesterday I went to Chinese cuisine restaurant.
Where, where is the restaurant?
In Kuala Lumpur.
Kuala Lumpur? Oh, you have been visit Kuala Lumpur first?
Yes.
So, you have seen the KLCC? Kuala Lumpur City Centre?
Yes, yes.
Or Twin Tower?
Ah, yes.
Yes, oh, good.
It's cool.
Enter the patronage? No?
Ah, no.
No, okay. Maybe you can come to your family next time and ask them to visit the Kuala Lumpur.
Okay, I'll do that.
And so, Darwisha, so for now at school, do you guys have any activities, interesting activities going on right now?
So, at our school, PKSK is, we don't, some, some students are doing PKSK right now.
PKSK, huh?
Yes. And like for Form 5, they're doing like trial for SPM, I think.
Oh, trial has already, already pass, eh?
I think so, yeah, they're doing like reciting, I think. Hafazain.
So, you from Session 9, right?
Yes.
So, as for your batch, how many people do you know?
Do you know, what?
Student, how many?
Students, so for each, there's like 10 class and each class has around like 35, so like... 300 students?
300, oh, okay, that's a lot. Okay, so, we will have a lot more question after this.
Okay.
But we have to take a break first. So, see you after the break.
So, tadi, tadi, dia tak main, kau orang boleh naik atas tengok macam ni, dah ni control room.
Do a volunteer. You guys, you want to be a talent? Okay, so you guys can put your bag aside.
Siapa nak jadi talent? Siapa nak jadi talent? Siapa boleh borak dengan Japanese student? It's okay, try je, jom. Betul? Apa, tak, tak sebab salah pun. Go. Baca, baca, baca. Same as it lah dengan talent.
Kau salah masuk TV, tak apa. Jadi famous ke je?
Famous ke je?
Jadi, nama Fatihah?
Fatihah.
Panggil Fatihah? Umur?
Umur 14.
14? Ah, okay, okay, okay. Kau orang kan campur kan? 14, 15, 16 kan? So, kau orang, di select each one?
Dia macam siapa nak join, join lah.
Oh, cuci je?
Ah, macam tu je.
So, betul apa?
Tuh, tu tak pasti.
Okay. So, I'll brief you guys, just slightly brief. If I show these signs, it means that you guys have another 30 seconds either before we go live or before we go to commercial break. Okay? If I show this one, you still have 15 more seconds. Anything, the host will guide you. You guys, you guys can talk anything you guys want.
Ah, wakti sini nama ayah, wakti Fatihah.
Make sure you guys feel comfortable, you guys say. Do you feel comfortable?
It's a bit nervous. No, I nervous too. What's your name?
Mi Yuka.
Mi Yuka. Can I call you Yuka? Or you prefer me to call you Mi Yuka?
Mi Yuka.
Mi Yuka, oh, Mi Yuka, okay. How old are you?
Ah, I'm 17.
17, oh, okay, 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 17. So, you studied in high school, right?
Yes, Shinjuku.
Shinjuku?
Yeah.
Boleh cakap Jepanah?
Cikis, cikis.
Cikis, cikis.
Nanti bulan Desember kena masuk exam N5.
Oh, bahasa ketiga ke?
Huh?
Bahasa ketiga?
No. Ah, bahasa keempat.
Eh, bahasa keempat, bahasa ketiga, oh, arak-arak.
Arak-arak.
Ni sana tau? Of course, stand is kola, mustakna arak. Are you study?
Saya ni say tak. Tak apa. Kita takut sama-sama.
Takut sama-sama, it's okay. So, bahasa keempat, Jepan?
Ah, Jepan. Di depan Davis Jepun ni, saya terus nak belajar Korea.
Dia under sekolah ke? Memang sekolah, sedikan ke?
Ya.
Wajib ataupun boleh pilih.
Dia boleh pilih.
Oh, boleh pilih, so maksudnya student akan belajar bahasa keempat?
Itu ikut certain orang lah, kalau dia bermina, dia boleh je. Tapi waktu first, we have a trial.
So, you can talk Japanese with Mi Yuka?
Maybe.
So, it would be easier for me if she don't understand what I'm saying, so you can translate with her? No?
Maybe, maybe. Let you, it's okay. Oh, thank you very much.
Seronok, dia belajar Jepan?
Seronok, tapi at the same time, dia susahlah cikit. Cikit.
Takut terus. Boleh diri translate entah.
Memang nak kena jadi. Bukan, nak jadi, jadi saya tu memang translator untuk ma ayah.
Oh. Maksudnya?
Maksudnya macam, my parents nak pergi luar negara, pergi kerja Jepun, so I have to be there untuk translate.
So, you will follow them if they have work obligation?
Yeah, tapi mostly dekat dalam negara je.
So, like the come, banyak engagement orang Jepun lah, tahu gitu eh? Mostly ke, ada ke, ada bahasa like from China ke, ada juga ke, ke memang Jepun je all the time?
Tertanam.
Tahu? So, if visit Jepan, then you have follow up?
Yeah.
So, Mi Yuka, you have been here for 3 days, right?
Yes.
So, where have you visited? Places you have go up?
Where is high school? And today, I go to Blue Mosque.
Ah, where you go?
Blue Mosque.
Look, aha, okay, Blue Mosque, okay? Oh, the big one, yeah. So, you entered the mosque?
Yes, 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 very little.
Oh. Insha Allah, for Manisya Alam. Ah, yes, it's, it's called Masjid, Masjid...
Shah.
Ternyata orang tak iki? No, I think Masjid. Shah Alam. Shah Alam, we, we here are in Shah Alam slama.
Oh, day. Ladia.
Kalau negeri, negeri pasti ni.
Negeri, um...
Negara, country, negeri?
Negeri.
Wah, you should call Google je.
Google, Google.
You can Google? Let's use Google. Tak biasa ke? Yes, tak biasa ke dengan sini? Biasa duduk belakang kamera lah, depan kamera ni, tiba-tiba je.
Tak jeber.
Tak jeber. I think, I just know Korean, I don't know Japanese.
8, 7, 6, 5...
Hello, welcome back to First Step from Table to Reality. Okay, now, we have a new guest from Sekolah Menengah Session 9. Okay, now, we have a new guest from Sekolah Menengah Session Semilan and international student from Japan. Okay, please introduce yourself.
My name is Nur Fatihah.
Nur Fatihah. How old are you?
I am 14 years old.
14 years old, okay. And you, what's your name?
My name is Mi Yuka.
Mi Yuka, okay.
I'm a Shinjuku High School student. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too. Okay, so, can I call you Mi Yuka? I call you Mi Yuka, right? Okay, Mi Yuka and Fatihah. Okay, so, we'll have some chat and I will ask Fatihah first lah. Fatihah, are you from Sekolah Menengah Session Semilan, right?
Yes.
So, what have you been doing in school? Any activities from school?
Not really. All I have been is studying.
Studying? What, what, something that interesting that you studying in school?
I study Japanese.
You study Japanese?
Yes.
So, you can talk to Mi Yuka, right?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Only a little bit.
Only a little bit?
Yeah.
So, you can understand Japanese?
A little.
A little?
Yeah.
Okay, so usually in Japanese, if we learn a new language, there will be a level. So, what level are you right now?
I'm on level five. It's the lowest level on the basics.
The lowest level is level five?
Yes.
So, maybe, how far will you go until level what?
I always wanted to go to level three or one like that.
Ah, so the smaller the number, the higher, right? Ah, okay, so, Mi Yuka, you've been here for three days, right? So, before this, yesterday or the day of before yesterday, where in Malaysia have you been visited?
I went to a local high school.
Ah, okay. So, okay, we will have more conversation after this. So, we will have breakfast, so see you after the break. So we will have a break first, so, see you after the break.
The first group, can we have the first group team to come there, go over, go over there? So we can take a picture, good picture again before we release you.
Do we have team one here? Team one, team one can go take pictures first, okay? Come. First group. Team one can go to take picture first, before you guys left, okay? Team two.
Tapi nak masuk.
Ah, Anchi Avis, Anchi Avis photographer.
Avis?
Anchi Avis.
Oh, iye.
Teacher, thank you.
Okay. One, two, three. Masih dah, masih dah. Mau, mau. Okay, now, ready? Maka, karekake, let's go. Next. Try now.
Kau teman, teman ini, president, president.
Okay.
Mau muda, mesti.
Ready? Bye.
Jangan lupa.
Karekake. Oi dah, karekake, hai, ah, one, two, three. Okay. Harus pasih. Oh, set, okay, sih, sih, dah. Okame, karekake, waduh, karekake. Sa, sa. Okay, ready? Okame, karekake, waduh, karekake. Sa, 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 ilah, ilah, waduh, karekake.
Thank you.